Okay. We'll call the August 21st, 2017 City Council meeting to order. Call of the roll.
John Hawkins.
Here.
Matt McKinney.
Here.
Brian Miller.
Here.
Jim Talbot. Logan Welch.
Here.
Call for a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Section A, petitions, communications, and requests. This is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. Except in cases of emergency, the city council will not take any action at this meeting, but may our city staff to research the matter or have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Anyone have any? Nope. Anyone have any public information you want to share? Quietly. Okay. Item one is, we'll call up our new officers, Ryan Bassinger and Dylan Rose.
I, Dylan Rose, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to do to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of police officer for the city of Webster City, Iowa, as now and hereafter required by the law.
I, John Hawkins, mayor in and for Webster City, Iowa, do hereby certify that the above oath was administered by me orally to Dylan Rose and the same subscribed by the sworn Dylan Rose on the 21st day of August of 2017. Give a better picture.
I, Ryan Bassinger, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of police officer for the city of Webster City, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law.
I'm John Hawkins, mayor of Webster City, Iowa. Do hereby certify that the above oath was administered by me to Ryan Bassinger and the same subscribed and sworn by Ryan Bassinger on the 21st day of August of 2017.
Okay, the next one is for Blake. Want to come on up, Blake? Blake's, we'll give one for him. We'll let us sit down. But Blake did a really wonderful job out there at Kendall Young Park, and we really appreciate it. Unfortunately, I've been a little remiss in the past at catching up with the Eagle Scouts and the wonderful jobs they're doing, so I wanted to bring in and thank you for that. You did a great job, thank you.
There's pictures on the screen.
Yeah, it's his job that he did. It is terrific. And it is our forgotten park in town, so. Item B is minutes and claims. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We have minutes of August 7th, 2017, resolution on payroll for the period ending August 5th, and paid on August 11, and a resolution on bills and the funds list.
I move to approve collectively.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Motion approved. Next section is C, general agenda. Motion and request from St. Thomas Quanus Parish Youth Group to close Des Moines Street between Bank and Water Streets on Sunday, October 8th, 2017, from 12:00 noon until 3:30 PM for a car show.
I believe there's just a similar request if hadn't passed, so, but Sunday, I think we would coordinate with getting equipment such as barricades and such out at that time. Being a Sunday, there's not a whole lot of use of Des Moines Street, so I believe there's supposed to be a problem for filling the request.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Motion approved. Item two is a citizen request from Todd Lovelace concerning the proposed trailhead in Brewer Creek 5th Edition. Todd, did you want to come up?
Get the introduction out of the way. Todd Lovelace, 1203 Cayman Drive, soon to be something West Cayman Drive.
Later on in the, later on in the meeting. Yeah. Could be appropriate.
I'll switch it to my computer. Okay. Well, while he's setting that up, there's just some pictures I wanted to show. I just wanted to share some of my concerns with the trailhead that's going in from West Cayman Drive to Beet Street. As currently, I'm the only resident on Cayman Drive slash West Cayman Drive, and I want to wait till the pictures come up before I start asking some questions, and I'm not going to smile. I'm kidding. Okay. So I have, I have some concerns. Some are obviously selfish concerns because it's my house, it's my yard. Some are safety concerns that I not only have for my family, but for the citizens of Webster City that are going to use the trail. And third, just financially, concerns for the money that it's going to take to put this in and to finish. But here's a picture of my backyard, essentially. Now, I understand my lot line only cuts to about here and over, so when I say that the, the trail runs through my backyard, it's a figure of speech. I'm not literally saying that the trail runs in my backyard, but as you can see, it's, it's pretty darned close to running in my backyard. It will run parallel with my yard up to West Cayman Drive, and it cuts through the trees behind my house. I have a walkout basement with three bedrooms down there with three of my daughters, and at one point, it'll be, the trail will be about 20 feet away from one of my daughter's rooms. So there's part of the safety issue that I have as well. You can see the, the view from my deck will have a sidewalk going through it. There's just some aerial photography, and I know several of you city councilmen have been over to my house to, to view it, because just looking at topographical maps and aerial views really doesn't do it justice, I don't think, until you actually see the area in question. And I guess, I just like to get in, feel free to interrupt me at any time, because I'm just going to blabber on and on until you guys tell me to stop. Because I'd like to point out a couple things. This is, this is actually where the trail's going to lead to right now. And my, my biggest question at this point is, is the trail going to be finished at once? Or is it going to take years? Because if it's going to take years, this is going to be a safety concern for everybody in town, because that's the trail that you're going to have to walk on until you get to Brewer Creek. So if you finish this trail going through my yards and Beet Street Bridge, which I believe somebody had deemed the, the trail to nowhere, this is where it leads to. And I met with Mr. McDaniel, and he had mentioned that maybe we could, you guys could just do it all at once. But all of a sudden, I'm, I'm figuring, did we just find a pot of money that we can, you know, finish the trail? Because I understand where the trail's going to lead, but that's part of my, I guess, safety concern, as I don't think anybody here would want to walk on this, on this street here. Because I did, and cars still drive by going like 45 miles an hour. This is just some pictures from the trail showing that it'll be the most darkly lit area of the trail with a house, and I can't think of another area besides Georgetown Road where this happens. So all you have to be forced to put in some kind of light, a fence, which I'm not a fence guy.
Isn't it anything like anybody else's sidewalk in town?
There's a lot of lights in town. I, I don't see any.
Not everybody in town has, you know, there are sidewalks that don't have, that are closer than 20 feet, people's houses.
But they're lit.
Not all of them.
Well, well, well.
They should be. No, they're not all lit. There are dark places in town.
Yeah, and then I guess I just wanted to show, which I did have some discussion again with the city manager, about another option would be coming straight off the boulevard there. Now, that doesn't take away the risk, the safety factor, if you only go to the Beet Street Bridge, but I guess I'm just wondering, why can't a sidewalk or a trail be put in from the boulevard going down, you know, not next to the highway? And then there's issue of, I know we talked about a sidewalk coming from West Cayman Drive, which I was told there's not enough room, but I don't know, it looks to be a lot, a lot of room there with some grading, but. So I guess that's just some things I wanted to discuss. There was a lot of talk, I know you guys had said you were concerned with getting this trail in before selling the two lots, but nobody ever mentioned, I was the only, I'm the only homeowner there, and nobody ever mentioned about not asking my permission, but at least letting me know that this was happening. I come home from a, a long trip to find out from my father-in-law that this is happening, and it just, it shocked me that nobody told me, and not that I'm allowed or awarded that I should be told, but. And then how something, I'm just wondering too, how something like this could be voted on, and I don't think many of you even visited the site to, to check it out first. So I guess those are just some of the questions I had. Those are some questions that you guys have.
Todd, are you, are you, just so I'm clear on, on maybe your, your argument or, or your points, you're, you're more opposed to the, the trail running adjacent to your, or parallel to your property line than you are the trail as a whole, right?
Yeah, I'm definitely out of, I'm a fan of the trail system, definitely. You know, I'm also a fan of walking on sidewalks. There's not any sidewalks out where I live, so it's just common that we that live out there walk in the, walk in the streets, and then now to throw a sidewalk in that's going to be parallel to my house and, you know, cutting, again, figure of speech, cutting through my backyard. And that's part of the selfish reason, and then to the, the safety of that next green line heading north. If that's going to take years to finish, then I think everybody in town should have an issue with that. But I'm definitely not opposed to the trail system, just the exact location and how it was derived.
And I'll be the first to admit that, yeah, so we should have reached out to you as soon as we started discussing the trail, touching the property line. I mean, obviously, the, the issues right now with Quick Star and that area, obviously, all the neighbors were notified and ring a man and whatnot. So I, I do apologize, not either the city or personally reaching out to you firsthand to, to make sure you're aware. I hate hearing things in the news as well. The trail itself, like you alluded to some, some points, Daniel made, about the timeline of the rest of the trail. Could, could you speak to that, Daniel? Like, what are the plans for that?
Well, yeah, I think there's another segment here from, basically, there's an existing pedestrian crossing that crosses Brewer Creek. So the, what I'd probably consider the first phase from Cayman Drive down to Beet Street was, was going to connect to the southern end. The northern portion was still in deliberation to try to figure out the appropriate path we would want to take. This segment here was introduced to the Park and Rep Commission on last Thursday, and they were agreeable to the path taking a, a middle path, so between Beet Street and the creek. The other two options was just paralleling Beet Street or following the creek's paths and meandering down into the parking lot. They, they chose the middle portion in part because it's far enough away from Beet Street that you get, our goal was to get away from that street traffic, especially in light that Beet Street's going to be resurfaced next year, so wanting to make sure that we're not doing anything that's going to be affected by the construction next year if we're to go too close or if we had to add additional curb or, or space between. But we didn't choose, or the commission didn't feel that the middle path would be appropriate because of the way the river or the creek meanders and the possibility of eroding like we've experienced in some sections of the existing Brewer Path. So now that they've concluded that, now we're looking and we discussed this in terms of what's it going to take to develop that path? What trees, how we want to try to keep, or do we want to just clear the entire path? And then from there, timeline on how long this might take. Now, I think as I told Mr. Lovelace, if there's a concern of that necessitates completing this, obviously, you guys of the council have discretion to give us direction to move forward with this ASAP if you would like. Otherwise, initial plan was to incorporate it into next fiscal year's budget process so that we can allocate the funds to be able to afford this. We have funds available that we can probably reallocate or reprioritize to get this done now, but since it wasn't something that was factored in for the existing fiscal year, we'd have to look at other, other things that would affect that. Now, total cost, we don't have an estimate on that yet because we're still looking at what the terrain is, length of that segment would be. But beyond that, the goal we initially said, depending on what, what should happen a year or two was, I think, our initial timeline. So the first phase, which is where Mr. Lovelace's property is, it's marinating, and we've, we've made sure we stayed clear of his property from the very beginning, but we wanted to make sure we, we obtained or we portioned off right away from the two lots that would be affected. And anyone that has called to inquire interest about Brewer Creek 5, we've made it known that this is our plan, was to put in this trail to connect to the Brewer Creek system, and there hasn't been any reservations or anyone saying that they would be automatically opposed to it or not look to purchase lots in that area to begin with. The area behind Mr. Lovelace's house, that's existing city property. We have a utility easement, that's where our underground electrical comes in at, and we're looking at some of the pictures that we've taken throughout the Brewer Creek project. This is a path leading up to, from Beet Street leading up to Mr. Lovelace's home. Now, I'm not sure whose mode that path coming down from there, but that was existing before we, we started that project out there. And so it'll essentially mirror that path, and as you turn the corner on this, this gate here, that's where it starts turning into the pedestrian bridge for the creek crossing. And concern is, if concern about accessibility to the, to that segment of the trail before it's ever opened, we can certainly put barriers or other obstacles to essentially close off the trail until it's fully completed at a future date.
So you'll build a trail to close it for years?
Well, we did, we realized that, we did that out on the east side of town. We had a trial that went that way for a year. It's not the first time we've done it.
So you, you say years, but even in our previous plan, it was a year out.
I didn't say it, the city manager said it at the last council meeting. He said a few years.
So I guess to me, when you look at that map, you know, to me, it makes sense why we have to get over the creek, and the cheapest route is directly to the nearest street. For us to, to, for us to do what you would propose, coming up on the new street, would be even more cost to us.
What can, why would it be more costly just to go from a sidewalk right here to there?
Just in distance.
But there isn't a sidewalk. There is no sidewalk.
I've got the distance. It's actually, this is.
But there is no sidewalk what he is talking about.
We'd have to add.
The sidewalks got to come from the top of the building.
There's not one sidewalk out where I live, not one.
There is no sidewalks, like people walking around.
So why would you, why would you have to build a sidewalk now to get to the trail?
The reason we're building it right beside the house is because we're bringing it up onto White Street, which is right where your house is. That's why it's going there.
Daniel, can you, can you speak to the options that were considered when the, the engineers, you know, visited with you regarding this?
Sure, like, we, we had looked at the option Mr. Lovelace had proposed, and, and one, it would be parallel to Beet Street, which would just further magnify the issues that Mr. Lovelace presented in terms of being right next to vehicle traffic. And though, even though the, the speed limit drops at 35 at Fair Meadow, you would still have the issues of the, of close proximity to vehicle traffic there. We also wanted to make sure that we provided pedestrian access, whether it's either trail or sidewalk, clear onto what probably the, the major pitch points in that both those subdivision 5, as well as the, the previous subdivision down at Brewer Creek 4, where Mr. Lovelace lives. There's no plans right now in, in the area to the south. That was one of the suggestions Mr. Lovelace presented to me was a future plans, if this were to grow, grow, grow or build out Fair Meadow and Beet Street, would possibly be a logical point to have that. But being that there's no plans right now to develop that area, you would essentially be extending that trail down to Fair Meadow and Beet Street without any expectation for years to come with that growth that we're coming. We know that this is a location where you have easy access, both for Brewer Creek 5 as well as pedestrians who would walk or ride their bikes coming down Fair Meadow from any of the other subdivisions. We wanted to also make sure that we provided a means to loop the Brewer Creek Trail as, as obviously we have a trailhead on Georgetown and North Terrace. So those, those were some of the considerations. One of the big factors that deterred us from Fair Meadow was the slope. You can, it's hard to see on the, on the PowerPoint, but you can kind of see the different contours of the elevation changes between Beet Street and Fair Meadow or West Cayman versus the proposed location that we were looking at. It's a much smoother slope as opposed to a dramatic incline that you would have on that street. Not to say that you can't work around that, it was just an item, more additional hurdles to overcome.
Yes. Excuse me, just hang on a minute. Todd, you, will you finish?
Well, I, I was just going to point out that I do, I do have a picture that I showed that I'm not meaning for this trail to go very, like, right parallel. There's a picture that shows that it can be substantially farther away from Beet Street, and you know what's going to happen when and if there's more development out here. Kids going to Little A, they're going to go as the crow flies. They're going to go out fair, or they're going to go out that boulevard. They're going to go down Beet Street. They're not going to turn, they're not going to come here, turn this way, go on, they're going to go right out here and right on to Beet Street. And that's, that, that's that file I showed you guys. That's what's going to happen, and at that point, you will build the sidewalk. So what I'm doing is just for, bringing it, bringing it to the forefront. Why not just do it now? Because if there's more building out here, you're probably going to have to build a sidewalk up near the Highway 20. So the pictures will show there's lots of room, and there's that lot, the, the lot lines to nine and, nine and eight, I don't know if there's an easement there, whatever you call it, but there's plenty of room. And, and again, that there's no need for a sidewalk going up the boulevard. You can just start in at Beet Street, so.
Thank you. If you, come on, come on up to the podium, thanks, yeah.
Okay, I'm Carol Kane, and I wasn't here for this project, but I've been with children for I don't know how long. And if you think those little boogers aren't going to run on their skateboards and their bicycles to that highway, are we going to have some kind of a barrier to stop them?
I think, I think that's my concern, is you can barricade that, but once it's there, you're going to have people using it. So I think we need to have serious discussion on what that cost is going to be to extend it and to do it all the way. I think you're going to have people on the highway, which is a safety risk.
You're talking the complete trail, though.
You're talking about when the trail ends.
You're too close to Beet Street, is what I'm thinking, because little darlings aren't going to.
The picture that, the picture that, see the picture, that, your, see the sidewalks the other side of that rail.
Okay, but even with Fair Meadow coming out, I think you need to have maybe a sidewalk like he said to, hopefully, they stay on that instead of darting out onto.
But that's why they're coming to this trial here, not going to come out Fair Meadow.
Yeah, that's part of the reason why we didn't choose the Fair Meadow option was for that, some of that reason.
That's where the busy traffic is.
I mean.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but if we have a street there at Fair Meadow, which is going to help traffic and everything from out on Des Moines Street, but it's, it's still, there should maybe still be a sidewalk out there off of Fair, or what is it, Fair Meadow?
Yeah.
Is that the street we're talking about? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go.
Tony Evans, 1620, want to meet at court. When you get up here, can you just go up by his house so I can see that end? What happens when you get here?
Street. You walk onto the street.
Where's the trail going then?
So.
The trail ends there, the same as it does, the same as it does. What does the trail do, what does the trail do?
You're the only one in Webster City that they're providing a sidewalk for.
What happens with the trail there?
Well, I don't know. I'm not in the trail.
Exactly the same thing. We've already had that, had them years.
Well, yeah, I've been on that one. Crop walked along, I don't know. Okay, it just wasn't making any sense to me. I didn't, it just ended.
That's why it comes to there, because it comes to there when everyone walks down the street. Unfortunately, that's where the whole subdivision is.
Well, I raised four daughters. I agree with Carol. Keep it away from Beet Street.
I did daycare for 13 years. Keep it away from Beet Street.
Well, I've raised more kids than that, so it's fine, so. I got seven.
Can I ask this question? Obviously, the last time we met, we were kind of in the understanding that the, the rest of the trail will be completed eventually, but we're doing this for, for price reasons or affordability reasons to pull it in with the infrastructure going on right now. And now it seems like maybe things have been expedited a little bit to look into the future plans of the trail. Can I ask, was this on the planning and zoning, excuse me, Parks and Rec Commission's agenda prior to? Can I ask, was this on the planning and zoning, excuse me, Parks and Rec, uh, Commission's agenda prior to, to Mr. Lovell's complaint? To look at options for the trail?
Was it on the agenda or was it on the horizon?
Was it on plans to be on the agenda, was it on, like, something that they were gonna be working on?
Well, Kent, I spoke to Kent about it, middle of last year, wasn't Kent?
Yeah.
So we, we've had it on the, on our horizon for quite a while.
And, and I'm not asking this as a baited question by any means, so please don't, I'm not trying to do that at all. The reason I'm asking is, is has Mr. Lovell's, um, concern expedited the, the rest of the trail process? Um, I, I think we all agree that we, we picked that spot for a reason, a, a lot doing to, you know, grade and, 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 uh, there's already, already kind of a trail there and ties into the bridge well. Um, I just wanna try to find maybe a, uh, compromise, if you will, and, and Matt kind of alluded to it too, uh, for safe reasons. If there is a true concern of, of, of this trail leading to nowhere and, and, and leading to a, a busy highway, um, to possibly, you know, do it all in an expedited manner. And I was just curious if it was already down that path with Parks and Rec, or if that's something that came out of this concern?
No, the discussions were limited to staff, uh, for the past several months as we've worked through the Brewer Creek construction. Um, and we've talked about how we were gonna connect it to the remainder of the trail, and so, I mean.
I, I would love to not use that bridge path, but the cost would be to put another bridge across the creek further.
Or you just pay, what was it, two hundred thousand dollars for a bridge on, for the same type of bridge?
So to not use that asset seems ridiculous to me. Could we come in further back and then ninety around maybe? Um, just to keep it as far from the street as we can, for as long as we can, I'd, I'd totally be open to that. Ninety around.
Well, there's no reason why you can't, why you can't bring the, uh, just the barrier that's there, you bring it along further.
Right.
So where the trail is.
What I'm getting at, as soon as we can, turn east.
Well, that's where it goes.
Yeah.
But in both, in both circumstances, it does need a barrier between the street and the...
How long has that bridge path been there?
East Second Street.
Twenty years, okay.
About twenty.
Twenty years?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess they did the right thing twenty years ago, really.
Yeah, I mean, if it, if that wasn't there, I could see coming further in, but.
Well, that was, you know, I guess that was my main thought at the time, was there was a pedestrian bridge there, um, so why wouldn't we use it?
So that's, that's the example.
White Fox.
Oh, yeah.
It's a shoe town.
Yeah, the bike and walking trail.
So that's what we could do to make it safer.
Oh, White Fox, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Well, you know, you're talking about a barrier there, you don't have a barrier on East Second Street or Superior Street for those sidewalks, why do you have to have one there?
Cause it's a trail.
Well, because it's, as they pointed out.
Trail through the same one.
As they pointed out, when you come, if you're gonna come down the trail and the kids are gonna come down there, having a barrier there would be a good safety thing, because otherwise, if they have a chance of running straight ahead now, whereas they do right here, when you ride your bike to there, you don't want people riding straight through there.
And, and you're literally be riding into a blind corner.
Yeah.
Uh, coming, any traffic coming from the north-south would be blind from the foliage and the, and the bridge. So, I mean, Todd, I, I think your concern has brought up a lot of valid safety issues, probably some that, to be honest, were, were overlooked. Again, again, I just, I can't, I, I, I don't, engineering-wise and cost-wise, I don't see the feasibility putting it next to Fair Meadow. Uh, uh, but again, I, I'm gonna rely on you, Daniel, to, to maybe reiterate more than just the grade. Possible cost difference, other issues, um, and why we, we did not go with Fair Meadow.
Yeah, those exact points as well, it's just the, um, trying to get away from Beach Street as quickly as possible to get, um, away from that vehicle traffic.
One of his, one of Mr. Lovell's points were that eventually we may need a sidewalk there anyway, due to, kid, you're right, you know, cutting down that, their, Fair Meadow Boulevard. Do you see that being something that could become an assessment after Brewer Creek, as would be seven? Just develop possibly in the future?
It really just kind of depends on what happens with Brewer Creek Seven. I mean, it's taken us twenty years to get to Five and Six. Um, cause it was twenty, if not more, or less to, to complete Seven, if that's even just something the city does, or whether someone else wants to buy that and take that on. Um, at which point, I mean, there, there's, there's nothing that requires them to do something like this, um, with that development. I mean, it's privately developed. Um, part of the reason why we, it wasn't, speaking in terms of the cost for it, part of the reason why it was, uh, uh, done the way it was, just to encompass that segment, is because it fit in with the, with the plaque for Brewer Creek Five and Six, so that it was incorporated, um, from the beginning, um, and the construction completed, um, while the contractors alongside, as opposed to re-incurring engineering costs, re-incurring, uh, construction costs. Um, the cost is rolled into the overall construction of the project, and then the cost of the construction spread out across the sale of the fifty-three lots, so.
Um, and we're as far, just, you know, with, with Todd's, some of Todd's concerns in mind, we're as far south as we can come on that piece of land of ours?
Yes.
It, was that due to because of what we just parceled off? We could parcel more, right, before the sale of the lot?
We could, um.
We have twenty, it's twenty foot wide, it's eight foot wide, so.
I'm just saying, like, the, our limitations are set by ourself, correct?
Well, it's all set with the size of the lot that's there already.
Yeah.
We don't want to abbreviate it, I get that, but I'm just saying, like, we, we set that boundary in a sense, okay?
Yeah, right.
You certainly take up, take more, more space from the lots, um, if you wanted to. The deeds and, uh, the cutting out of that small portion, um, has already been recorded. That was part of the other reason, was trying to make sure, we already had that existing city property to, to the west of him. So we weren't taking up any more space that was going to impede, um, the size of lots or the, the ability to construct on it.
We don't have an easement north of him that we could put it on?
No, that's, uh, yeah.
Then we have to build bridges.
Right.
That's some property.
You know, now, I, I guess if you really wanted to, I mean, the Brewer Creek abuts all the homes in this area. So if you really wanted to and not go directly to the side yard, you can follow the, the creek's path from the north. Um, that'd probably add more challenges and definitely more length in trying to figure out where, where it's gonna exit out to, um, on Cayman Road or somewhere else and so.
I was just thinking, then that'd be on the garage side of his house.
Correct.
Why did you mow the trail down to Beach Street?
For one, just to, cause I knew there'd be a lot of traffic, people looking at this, so I wanted to, instead of them going through the weeds, to look at it.
But it's been mowed before today.
Yeah, well, it used to be mowed, but.
It's been mowed, it's been mowed regularly, I mean.
Yeah, well, yeah, regularly. Is that a, is that a city barricade there?
No, that's the old farmer's fence.
Well, that's some city property.
Can I, yeah, ask one more question?
Yeah.
So, can you go back to my picture? I guess, I just, I'm fuzzy as to, when somebody is going to ask me this question, um, my PowerPoint. I just, I'm not, I'm unclear, um. Can I, is, is this anywhere?
Yeah, hang on.
I'm sorry, this is taking up so much time.
No, no worries, I'm not even close to a record yet.
I guess, like, this picture here, somebody's gonna see this and they're, they're gonna ask me, "So why can't they just build this trail from here to there?"
Because that puts it, because that puts it straight onto a busy street. That's why we're not putting it to there.
But if you look at your, your, the, the map, there's gotta be forty feet of, um, where those lot lines end, like.
Except you see, do you see? Yeah, but that's not the part I'm talking about, I'm talking about this street here, where you come down this street. Where you come down Fair Meadow.
That's the part I don't understand, why do we have to build a sidewalk down Fair Meadow? That's what people are gonna, going to wonder.
But you can't even get a sidewalk down Fair Meadow, cause it's that steep on the south side of the road.
Perfect, let's just.
That's why we don't have.
Let's get that out of our brain, then. No sidewalk on Fair Meadow, we start, what, people are gonna ask, why?
That's why the trail, why the trail comes out beside your house, is because it's the quietest street, it's the best place to bring it out to.
Now, part of the reason why that's not feasible is also because that's a little ditch, and that's the reason why this covert is there. So if we were to follow that path along Beach Street to Fair Meadow, we would have to address the ditch and ex- put, install a much longer, um, covert, the entire span of Beach Street, thus incurring additional costs. But then the other part is making sure that it didn't end on Beach and Fair Meadow, was that we reconnect it to Cayman Drive.
With the whole thought of staying away from Beach Street, why would we? My thought is why would we put that access right into the main entrance to the new subdivision?
No, I agree, I just, there's a lot of room.
And if we added a sidewalk next to it, then that'd be a great additional cost.
I just don't know where the, this other sidewalk down Fair Meadow always gets brought up. I'm not talking about a sidewalk on Fair Meadow, where there's not one sidewalk out there.
And there is no traffic, and so you, so what you wanna do is lead the trail to Fair Meadow and leave and stop it there. Even though we just made, made sure that all the traffic that's leaving that whole area is gonna come out Fair Meadow. So we talked about what's safe for the children, that definitely isn't safe for the children.
That's what the children are gonna do.
The kids aren't gonna come from the park and then go up by our house to get to the trail.
They will, they will, if you tell them to.
They're going to take Fair Meadow all the way to that road.
I mean, to me, that's...
They're already doing it.
So you're saying your children don't do as you asked them to do?
Yes, and we need to continue to teach them.
Well, I think you'll find that they will do it at this trail because it's there.
Yes, but they'll go on Fair Meadow almost all the way. You're fixing nothing.
I, I, I see what you're saying. Again, I live up in the neighborhood, and, and Fair Meadow is a, a, the main, you know, artery, if you will, of that neighborhood. And, and, and it's, uh, it's, I think it's a little unsafe as it's right now, even though it's dead heads.
Yes.
This is gonna make a, a, a little bit busier of an intersection, you're right, that, they're gonna take Fair Meadow, depending on what side they're at, you're right, they're gonna take Fair Meadow, not Cayman, and wrap it around.
On the way.
I, I totally understand if you're coming from there.
Except there are, there is.
And so you're only sa- you're only saving that one area.
Well, eh, your sidewalk, as you come out, where it cuts through there, the last part, where the two roads go together, it's very steep through there. It's difficult to walk down that part of it.
It's, it's not, it's still.
If you, if you go, if you go back up Be- Fair Meadow further, back up before your street, before Cayman, it's pretty fairly flat in there, the kids can walk down the sidewalk there, walk down the grass, and they're fine. So they walk down there, they turn and go down Cayman, and then go down the trail. It's, it's not much different, except it's about probably two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us to change it, compared to seventy thousand dollars that we've already given the contractor to go ahead and do.
That the lot buyers are going to pay for.
We've already given them the money.
You're gonna get it back from the people that buy the lots, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Get the good jobs and tell them to mine.
So you're not paying for it?
Except that we are, at the, at the end of the day, it is our money, we are paying for it. It is our money, no matter which way you look at it, it is our money.
I, I, I think there's some contention going here, and, and I completely understand your frustration, and, and I understand wanting to stand behind the decision we made a couple weeks ago. I completely validate your concerns, though, about using Fair Meadow rather than Cayman. I, my kid doesn't even know what Cayman is, probably, he, he knows Fair Meadow like the back of his hand, though. And, um, I, I get your point completely. I also understand your point that there's no sidewalk needed necessarily, I mean, cause again, we, we, we trailhead off of roads that, I think it's a benefit not having sidewalks up there, but, um, so the, I guess the, the only downside is yes, there are children walking and playing on roads, unfortunately, some of them are busier than others. And I just wanna kind of like, reset a second, you know, um, before the contention gets out of hand, but, um, unfortunately, I, I, uh, I'm where I'm at right now, Lovell's is, uh, with a, same by what I, I voted on a couple weeks ago. But I really do appreciate you guys coming in and, and voicing your concerns, that brought up some great safety issues, and possibly even expedite it for the rest of the trip.
Definitely. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna move it, put anything on it or change anything?
I guess I'll just reiterate my, my concern as far as wanting to evaluate the cost of extending it, if we're going to build it there, cause I don't think barricades will keep people off of it.
You mean just not yet?
Not stopping where it's at.
So just do the whole thing?
I suggested that we.
At least having a cost.
I suggested that we actually, if we could just, even if we could do dirt work and get the, and have a gravel trail from that bridge and through, then at least we haven't got, at least we, we can do that with, with what we have. Instead of, you know, with, with the dirt we have at the city already and things like that, we'd probably go in and do it, most of it ourselves.
So you're saying, possibly city workers excavate the, the trail path?
Yeah.
Possibly just rock it.
Without sealing it, yeah.
Temporarily.
And then next year, you know, whenever we can get it, and we can get it sealed, we get it sealed.
And that's, that's a great idea to get it started, however, I do worry about if a kid's on a bike or, or a skateboard, they're gonna go, "Uh, hard pavement," you know, it's not rock, so they probably would be prone to jump on that, that Beach Street. But no, I know what you're saying, it'd be...
But we could put, meanwhile, we could still put a, um, a concrete barrier right there, with temporary barriers there each side of the, of Bridge Street.
To keep them from?
From, to get to the end of the trail. Just put the, say the walls there. I mean, we could put a concrete barrier.
So I think that's part number two, I think we need to know what's that cost, how far would we run that concrete barrier?
And how soon we can do it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm with you, man, like, I, I definitely think we need to start, and it sounds like we already have, started that, that path, no pun intended, uh, to see where the rest of this trail's gonna go and how it's gonna tie in. So let's just kind of up that on the docket, you know?
Item three is to recommend approval of issuance of beer and liquor licenses by the Iowa Department of Commerce for the following. A, renewal of a Class C beer permit, La Pampa, Campana, Lane Campana, seven twenty-eight, Second Street. Renewal of Class E liquor license and Class B wine permit, Class C beer permit and Sunday sales for McCoy's, one four four seven, one four four seven, Second Street. Call for a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, same sign. Motion approved. Item four is a motion on Planning and Zoning Commission minutes, um, for August fourteenth, twenty seventeen. Did you wanna say anything on that, or was?
This one, we, we can approve the minutes, and the next item is what we request to, um, defer to later date.
Okay, actually, I probably should have removed that at the beginning of the meeting. Anyway, um, so a call for a motion for approve the minutes?
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Item five, we're removing that, um, and putting it on a future agenda, I believe it's put off for a...
Yeah, the applicant wants to request additional time to wait through a couple options, um, that were, uh, brought to light at the P and D meeting. Um, he has some time between, um, when the petition is first submitted to when, um, action needs to be finalized by the council. And so, um, he's requested additional time to kind of work through some of those options and double back with us to see, if he wants to continue with his petition or withdraw completely.
So just to be clear for those, you know, listening at home or, or in the audience, the press, the, the party in question that needs more time is a representative of the development company looking to purchase the land, waiting on our decision on the rezoning of the parcel next to the bank in the Harries. So we're not, we're not voting on five. We're not setting a date.
We're not setting it, we're not setting a time and date yet, yeah.
Okay.
It's put, it's put off for a while. Okay, item six is a resolution establishing a nuisance at thirteen sixteen Superior Street and ordering abatement thereof within thirty days.
I am here.
Okay, come on up. All right.
Uh, my name's David Sturbrud, thirteen sixteen Superior Street, this is my first time doing this, so bear with me.
Feel fun.
But, uh, um, I got some paperwork from the city, uh, or the building inspector, whatever you wanna call it, saying that I needed to fix my roof. Several reasons I had not even, even came close to fixing my roof is my plans were, in the future, she didn't have the other side of the picture of, well, two reasons. Well, the garage part I'd already took care of. I'm, I don't know what we're doing with the garage door. The, the roof, I, I don't plan on having that building as a garage anymore. If my future plans were to add it on to the house. Cause the house is not even big enough to fit a dog in, far as I'm concerned. Cause the house is not even big enough to fit a dog in, far as I'm concerned. Number one, um also is I've also gotten a lot of. I've heard in the grapevines, people were complaining because we left our garage door open. Well, now I gotta close. Now. That I've closed it, now I got somebody complaining about a one side of a roof. And if I put if I put the money into it now, and I've put in a lot of money into this house. And have not even came close of coming back out of it, I'm not regained, I have not regained any of my value of this house. And. I just find it kinda strange how people wanna focus on the bad stuff and they don't even see the good that I've done. Which is kind of a, a to me, I just think. I ran I ran out of money. And right now I don't have the money to do everything. We we were planning on refinancing. We did refinance once in this in this time. When I did this stuff, this was all right after Katrina. Everything was three times as high as what it was supposed to be when we, whatever. The roof on the garage, my plans were to just tear off the roof. Build build that to be the living room, add it on to the house. And now that they opened up the alley. Then I would put a garage in the backyard. That was my plans. I hope I go and spend three hundred dollars right now, three hundred that I don't even have. To fix one side. That's only one side. If you saw the other side, you wouldn't even think anything was wrong. But we take pictures of the bad sides. But that's that's where I'm at right now.
One more, was it was it David?
David, yes.
Sorry, didn't catch it at first, but. How long you lived there, David?
Ten years.
Ten years, okay.
Two two, two thousand and six is when we we bought it and it was gutted. It was everything. It was. We had to redo the wiring and that was another thing I had an issue with is because. That's gonna create a, I'm gonna have to get a permit. Am I correct? Exactly. And and I I'm hearing from you guys that what like the trail thing, it's money. You couldn't do certain things. Well, we have the same issues too. And you guys wanna seem to look over that and think. I don't, that was just a.
Is the building square?
Is the what?
Is that building square?
Square?
Yeah, it looks like it's leaning the way it is.
The the door, the door was, no, actually, it's not really, it's not, it's not leaning at all. The door makes it look, cause the door broke. And it was three days and they nailed me right three days later.
I think that door was open more than three days.
No, I I took it down after they, yeah, well, yeah, but I the three days after that happened, I got a letter.
No, David, to to your point. You know, it it's right on a main street in Webster City and 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 I have seen improvement to that that building. I remember that. Uh home ten fifteen years ago, it wasn't pretty rough shape. Uh and you have done a lot to it. You know, I I don't know if you've kind of been keeping up with some of the direction accounts lately, um if you haven't, so.
And I might, I try to mind our business.
Most people have it. Um we've really cracked down on nuisance properties and uh, you know, instances like that. Uh and unfortunately, you're getting pulled into this this new wave of uh city direction to really get get stern with this. Um we've given that direction to our city inspectors, city manager, to really go after these. And I totally understand your frustration and you're right, you know, there's only so much money, right? I mean. Uh but at the end of the day, uh we we have to put safety first, no matter if the money's on a lower note. I would be open to, you know, anyone else's opinion, you know, uh on this matter, but I just want you to know that we're not coming after you or targeting you or or by no means are you. Being made an example of. It's it's literally, we're pumping out letters like this to a lot of homeowners and property owners. Um to avoid future situations or future nuisance property issues or or safety issues. So please don't feel like attacked by the city. We're we're just nothing personal at all. It's just kind of a new direction. Um I'd I would like to hear from others though, kinda where we're at on this, but.
So the first letter you got was June something?
June seventh.
So is it typical that they contact you and try to make arrangements?
Yeah, most people do. Most people come into my office and say, hey, this is the situation. My plans are to do this and, you know, are are very open and. Do great with communication. However, we didn't receive that same communication back from David, unfortunately.
What what is it we're looking at? What's the main complaint we caught?
The main complaint is the garage roof.
Okay. Not on that. So we're not worried about the siding?
As for the siding, it doesn't pose a safety issue at this point. Just because he's chosen not to complete the siding, it doesn't pose one way or another. It's not come loose from the building. It's just unsided at the top.
And and you're right, to your.
So we just step one side of the building?
That's the side of the roof, that's right.
And and do you not have any plans to to do anything with it?
I I would like to just tear the whole roof off and then turn it around, turn the roof direction and attach it to the house and then turn it into a living room.
At what stage you, is that is that possible, I guess, be the first?
Unfortunately, that's not possible. Garages are not built to specifications that are required for living space.
So we'd have to tear it down and start all over?
Right. The footings aren't proper. There's several things in there that aren't built to the specifications.
How do you figure? Have you been in it?
Any garage is not required to have the footings. It doesn't have forty two inch in the ground footings that you would have.
I'll bet you the difference it doesn't.
If if you wanna think you have to prove. In order to get a building permit and meet specifications.
All the way around and it goes way down because the back end is on a hill.
Okay, but it'd have to be forty two inches all the way around into the ground. Not just in the rear.
And to be honest, if you if you changed it, right, the 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 footings would have to change. The the foundation of the garage, the the rectangle would now be.
The front, the whole front would have to be turned redone, redone.
And you have to reuse some footings. And then again, not to get down in the weeds. So really, we're talking half of a roof, I'm guessing is around a hundred and fifty square feet ish, right? Uh to re-roof, is that?
It's ten squares.
Ten square, okay, ten square. Is that? That's the root of the issue and that's what needs to be resolved?
That's what needs to be addressed, yes.
Half of, just half of the roof. We're not selling in the whole roof.
Right.
Have you? I wonder if have you have you been, are you, you know, having financial lip at least?
Yes, right now I'm unemployed.
Have you been and seen power to see if there's any way that we've got.
The funds?
Funds there in the city that are available to you if you're unemployed and whatever.
Well, if you're if you're saying that I can't even add it on to my house or even say feasible, that's feasible. Really, that garage, it's really nothing. I mean, I can't even fit my truck in there.
So so David, that that that's leading me down a different direction. And so wh- what we're saying is if you fix half of the roof. Um the the garage can stand, you know, it can stand and you avoid a municipal infraction. If you choose not to, then the next step would be a municipal infraction and possibly an unsafe building. I I'd recommend.
How does shingles make it unsafe? That's what I wanna figure out.
Because it's not able to support our normal snow loads that are designed here in Ireland.
Shingles has nothing to do with it. That's the rafters.
It has to do with the structural integrity of the roof.
No, it doesn't.
It does.
No, it doesn't.
According to the International Building Code, it does.
The code what you just made up yesterday or what?
No, the International Building Code, which is international, not just made here in Webster City.
Uh again, we're we're getting kinda contentious.
There's how many other places have you, I'm serious. How many other places have you gone and looked, let alone? There's one right across the street, draws a tree that's even down for a whole year. Have you even bothered about that? No. But instead you wanna sit there and I disagree with you. I have been and since we bought this house, I have been nailed time and time and time again from the city and I've always corresponded with them. But this one, this one is, you know, giving me a month. I'm a one man team here. And expecting me to do it, I don't get, I don't get the options like you guys do it. Where you got sixteen people doing one thing.
David, I I would like to help your situation. I I I don't believe in in giving you more time. I believe in looking for other ways to give you help with roofing the garage. Or that's, you know, donated shingles or or some volunteer help, but. David, I I we we started down a path that I really don't wanna veer from, but I totally understand your situation. And I think there's help that we can provide you or help you find outside of an extension. And and we can argue Iowa code all you want. I I have no bearing on that. I I know very little. I rely on the. And the inspection department to to educate me on that and to provide, you know, uh expertise in that department, but. I I'm I'm siding with the lease here on what's what's right and wrong for structures in Webster City.
So what options might be available to him as far as?
You know, Carla has some funds available for a a lower no interest loans for um housing rehab or. She'd have more idea in terms of what what qualifies and and uh payment plans that might be available. Other than that, that's that's the big one that stands out.
Could we provide David maybe a like a one on one meeting with Carla in in the next couple of days or or or?
Sure.
Some some details or some passing go down for some financial assistance or help?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who's Carla?
Our planning director.
Where's she at? Been there?
Yeah, she's in the city manager's office, yeah.
Would would that be a good plan on on your?
I'll talk to him, yeah.
Oh, very good. So as it stands now, though, the second notice, the deadline for that is what, today?
It was today, yes.
Will that mean we'd have to be open to extending a couple of days? How how do we approach that?
Yeah, you guys have the discretion to kinda determine um extensions or however long you'd like to give them. Um obviously, I think some of the some of the initial feedback early on in the spring had been with uh uh making sure that some of these. Nuisance properties that can't be at the rest are done so before the winter months. So, I mean.
The the resolution as it stands is is down for thirty days. If we take the resolution, it's there.
So it has thirty days?
Yeah.
Yes, you're right. Without an extension. The thirty days is baked into the ordinance as it is just.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we were looking at.
Okay, I got one more question. You just made me just. You you're gonna give me help to do the roof. I accept, I and I appreciate that. Don't get me wrong. Or try to give me help. But it doesn't make sense because if you're saying that I can't attach it to my house and turn the roof, which would be no different, there is no difference.
So I'll give you a hand to pull it down then?
Huh?
You want me to give you a hand to pull it down then? Because obviously you you're better off without it than than you might have even got wait till the full.
No, I it it doesn't make sense that you're saying, okay, I fixed this garage. All of a sudden, the structure seems to be just A okay. But then but then when I go to turn it, turn it to the other direction, it's not okay?
No, because it's a garage, it's fine. As 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 a house, it isn't.
But so in the same time, propose, assuming we have him get with Carla. In that same time, you could give him a list of reason or you could check to see if that would be doable with that garage, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'm assuming there'll be a checklist of. Why it can happen and why it can't and then you can decide at that point.
I hope it's built better than my garage.
Huh?
I hope it's built better than my garage.
I mean, Elise is judging.
My garage didn't have any footings.
Every garage you've been in town.
Based on the standard filled garage, yes.
I had to put them all in.
So we can confirm that, we can get with Carla and then it will proceed and you'll have thirty days to. Make it happen.
All right.
Appreciate you coming down.
Yeah, thank you for coming in.
So who's setting the motion?
So we're we're moving to set the resolution, establish.
Yes, to approve the resolution.
I moved to. Second.
We're ordering the abatement within thirty days.
So to be clear, cause we've had this issue before, we did not give him an extension. We accepted the resolution, which was thirty days.
Well, in some ways we did give an extension, but because we can make it tomorrow.
But as but as it's written, it's thirty days.
As is written here.
So by us passing this, we're we're starting the clock on the thirty days.
Yes.
Not an extension.
Okay, so I've got.
Who is second?
Welsh.
I seconded.
Mood Miller seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Good job, Elise. I I think sometimes these things come to her and I apologize for moving on, but. Uh I think sometimes these things come to us and 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 some of the the background work isn't seen. And it's uh, you know, it's it's easy to get up on the podium and say, oh, the city's after me, but um it's uh. Uh not the case. I I appreciate it. Thank you.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing mayor and city clerk to enter into a structural fire training agreement between the city of Webster City, Iowa. And the Webster City Fire Department and A and E properties in connection with property located at fourteen thirty seven Burgess Street.
So the question I got asked is based on this, does that mean we'll be able to do controlled burns of nuisance properties?
Chuck, do you wanna come on up? It's no.
Yeah.
Yes and no.
I didn't know. I said I'd ask.
While he's coming up, can you put the map up that shows us where that property is?
Yeah, it's funky road.
On that Rainley Road.
Well, are you sure who owns that property? How do you determine who the owner is?
Mayor.
We can verify that.
We.
Pardon me?
We can verify that.
The person who asked.
Have you?
Yes.
It's not part of the courthouse records. That's why I'm asking.
That's because the person who owns is law enforcement, so they're able to uh restrict their ownership information on the assessor or county's information.
Including their address and the fact that the property exists?
I doubt I doubt with the same issue when I purchased from my house from a from a state trooper and there was a couple of hurdles I had to jump through or that my. Closer had to jump through to find that out.
Well, you understand why I asked, right?
Yeah. Bron, what was your question, Chuck?
So. Maybe I jumped a little bit, but you're doing the structural fire training. And the question I had is, does this mean we'll be able to do more controlled burns of nuisance properties?
Okay, so a a couple of different things come in come into light with that in regards to having an acquired structured live fire burn training. Uh the D and R has requirements of. Homes or buildings that you're destroying and they give you a couple of different classifications. They'll classify one as a fire, uh live fire, acquired structure training, and then they also uh. Do it just as as destruction or demolition of a building. So what I'm speaking to as of tonight would be an acquired structured live fire training. So to answer your question, what we're doing here doesn't uh. Mix necessarily into what you're discussing. Uh there are separate protocols that are required to do that. There are avenues that the D and R does allow to be able to do that, but that's not what we're discussing this evening. Uh that being said, not to say that if a structure comes available. That that we could work out an agreement to do that, we could do that, but they are two separate items. So tonight, what what we've done is uh the city manager, myself and attorney, we we've kind of discussed. What some of the liabilities possibly could could occur through a uh live fire training burn as of this in the past or. Through NFPA and and the D and R, basic requirements are a letter from the owner of the property. Uh said owner states that you can demolish the building through any kind of fire training that you so uh desire. We've decided to make something a little more uh very tangible, very um. Capable of of keeping us out of any kind of liability issues as a city and a department by stating. In numerous fashions. That we're not responsible once we've been assigned over the building for the damage and destruction because that's what it's been allowed to be used for. So that is that is the reason for the addition. It is a good addition. I think it keeps the city safe from any possible uh issues that might occur. To give you a little bit more information on the street, uh the way I understand it is Burgess Street, which runs right here. You can kinda see the small detached garage there and then the the home is right next to it. From what I understand, that used to be Old Highway twenty and then the city took it over and it's now Burgess Street. I think that uh once we complete the training, if approved. That uh there are future things that could possibly take place there that would uh be helpful to the city if you speak with the owners. There, I think there are things that can be done there to pass the site at home. uh be helpful to the city if you speak with the owners there, I think there are things that can be done there at the best of the sights and point. The home in particular compared to the last structure that we had is is excellent for fire training. Uh it's gonna give us a lot of opportunity to do several different things, as well as with other organizations that surround our department, so. If if it is approved, what we're asking for is if you approve this uh structure uh agreement, that all future burns that we would do would also be under the same type of agreement, we would bring it to you for approval each time.
Can we get any closer to the house? Like, is that just the the only street view we have?
No, Google didn't go that way.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
So the last one you did, I know a lot of people that were involved with it, and they couldn't speak highly enough about the experience. Some of them haven't had that experience before, so um I know you have some young firefighters, so.
Yeah, excellent training.
You don't see a negative to it at all?
And I don't think it's in here, but like roughly how big is this building? Again, I'm trying to go off of what I see there, but.
It's about twelve hundred square feet.
Oh, okay.
Smaller than the last one, right?
It's probably about the same size, but the uh it's just the way each of the rooms are built in it, it's gonna work even better than the last time.
Well, I'm I'm excited, this is two in a year, right?
Yes, sir.
And it's only August, so uh yeah, this is great, and I I I I'm pretty sure that the community loves to see this happen too. You know, see you guys out and about and 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 uh when they see you guys doing your thing, they feel a lot safer, you know, so I think it's awesome.
So how do you add to training ones a year?
If if we leave the roof shingles on, the DNR allows two burns a year, if you take the shingles off, you you're permitted more.
Are you doing the garage at the same time, or was it?
Yes, sir.
Can we steal the shingles off that garage? I know somebody who takes.
Too soon.
Thanks, Chuck.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Okay, call for motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item eight is a resolution amending the official street name map provided in the Webster City, Iowa Code Ordinances nineteen ninety-six by renaming the west end of Cayman Drive to West Cayman Drive, located in Brewer Creek Estates Fourth Edition, Webster City, Iowa.
Move to approve.
That will take away the problem of getting pizza delivered, they can't apparently, they can never find us, so it was a one of those things.
Have a motion, I need a second.
Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Becky, I'm pretty sure it's more than just pizza, but pizza's serious business, but it's probably also.
You know, if you get cold pizza delivered, you might understand why.
Forgot to come up there and talk, too.
Item nine is a resolution approving execution of warranty deeds conveying three city-owned properties in Brewer Creek Estates Third Edition, Webster City to Veranda Homes Incorporated as a signee of Shuna Realty Incorporated of Corleton, Texas.
Sure, I mean, if you recall, uh just the other month, the council approved um selling the three lots to Shuna Realty. Um essentially, they're they're affiliated, well, actually, they are affiliated with uh some of the principal partners um with Verro Blue. Uh they've, Shuna Realty is the uh essentially the holding company until he uh and he's created a new business entity in Iowa known as Veranda Homes, which is gonna be the developments, residential development arm uh of Ted Ray's operations and plans, and so um the original purchase agreement was with Shuna Realty with the caveat that uh assigned as per their discretion, which is now being assigned to Veranda Homes. Um as noted in the memorandum, um and the conditions of the sale was that each lot um was to have a fully constructed um basements within six months of the closing date, um and in turn, uh the the construction uh of three new homes on in each on each of those lots, so.
What what if they don't? Like, what kind of, what can we do if they don't have those basements built in six months?
They don't, and we can go after them under the fact, under the purchase agreement, and their attorney's well aware of it, and when I spoke to their attorney, they she knows that they have to, and in fact, when she, when we, when she did her title bidding for the company, she references it in there too, that they have to have them, so.
And and I I think I asked a similar question, Daniel, like shortly after we, or or shortly after council approved the the sale. Um when you say go after them, like what what is that?
It's just a breach, I mean, they're essentially, it's their consideration, not only the money, but also was the 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 understanding that they were in the property, so we're selling it a lot, they're in return giving us money and a promise to build, so if they don't, they essentially breached their, the contract.
And we could retain damages, not retain the property, right, just?
Yeah, if we wanted to, I mean, they, you can make an argument to it, but more like more than likely, it's just damages, so. Again, I don't see that, I don't see it being an issue, I I really don't, not with uh these nice.
Not with anything else, not with anything else he'd like to do in town.
Yeah, they, he's been in quite a bit talking to Elise about um building codes, um what he can and cannot do in specific residential areas, or R one versus R two zones and things of that sort, so um.
And he also has been soliciting bids for basements, so he is on the right track, he did come in and and speak with me here recently about his plans, so he is on track.
Yeah. Call for motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item ten is a motion on request from the inspection department on purchase of a pickup truck with bids received.
Um yes, so we solicited five local dealers, and I am thrilled to say that Webster City Auto was able to come in within their five percent after they went and got some special exceptions from their factory, so they did come back three times, and they were finally able to be in that area. Um so, which is really cool to be able to shop local.
I I was, I was, yeah, very good, very good. Uh, you know, and 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 Bob, I I appreciate you being here, because I think uh you challenged us last last meeting, and.
Isn't that what you, so what you, how you addressed it as I challenge?
You gotta be a little correct. You challenged us, Bob, and and when I saw this this memo come across in my pack, I'm like, whoa, hey? I was really expecting to go, eh, okay, they're out, they're out of line, I've gotta go back to save it.
Yeah, the first time, two times I came in, they were still way out of line, but they were able to get some concessions from the factory, so it was really awesome.
And and it's good to, again, we haven't voted yet, but again, if if all it goes is the recommendation, it's good to give Webster City Auto some some uh credit for that too, to go to work for us.
Absolutely, Chad worked very hard doing that.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Twenty-four thousand seven hundred fifty.
So it's a little bit over the state bid, but it's it's within that five percent.
Is is the uh the Chevy, two thousand eighteen Chevy that's proposed, does that gotta fit your needs?
Yep, that is very comparable to the Dodge that we looked at originally, so they they were able to meet specs and all of that, so everything lines up perfectly.
Okay, call for motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I didn't order red or pink.
She wasn't allowed. Give me how to do anyone driving it. Item eleven is discuss changes to fireworks ordinance number twenty seventeen eighteen dash eighteen oh two. Feedback from the town hall meeting means that we'd like to have another look at it, so. Anyone have any ideas?
Hey? All heard from people.
I did, I did speak to Jim today, um while he was still in hospital and they released him. He would like to see it shortened by a fair bit.
I know there's been a lot of people, or some people, that just don't wanna see it at all, but I'm totally on board with shortening it, I think a month or whatever it was is way too long.
Well, I think we're at three months at the moment.
Yeah, whatever.
And we're and we're, what, almost a month of Christmas, huh, Wednesday, so.
So I don't think it's unreasonable to narrow it down to a week?
Mind you, we were at uh this last July, we didn't get approved until July.
About June or.
June.
No, it's not, it was late June.
Yeah, it was like June, it was like.
There was only, I think there was eight days total.
Yeah.
So you've already, you've already done the week trial, just so you're, I mean, you.
I remember what we discussed, and we knew by the time we got it approved, there wouldn't be that much time left.
Yeah, they didn't get, so normally, they would have gotten full one, almost entire month of June, plus into July, a weekend following the fourth of July, so.
So could you have it down to where you would have it? You know how we have the weekend deal thing there, so that, so have you got to allow for the weekend before and after all the time?
You can allow, you you can, with use, you can do whatever you want.
So like if we.
The only sale that we, the only sale that we care about as far as state codes is use, you're allowed to, you can say no fireworks, you can say only on the fourth of July, you can say only at this time.
Say July one to July seven.
So do you prefer it only did fourth of July? And um and then I think it was day four and and every other, I mean, there's, I mean.
I I would like to see weekend use, but not week use, so when you open it up to a week, or like July first, July eighth, you hit a lot of Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, you know, working people, you know, so obviously, school's not usually an issue, but um like, for instance, like fast forward to July two thousand eighteen, the fourth of July is on a Wednesday, right? So if we do a a a week, or the weekend before and the weekend after, and every in between, that's that's quite the gamut. I would propose we do the weekend before being X time on Friday to X time on Sunday, and again, just fill in the blanks here. And the weekend after, X time on Friday, X time on Sunday, and then maybe just the day of the fourth. To to know how that's worded though, uh ordinance wise, I'm gonna leave that to you or.
To me, it's more important to um make it something that's consistent, so the whole point of this is, everybody's gonna shoot fireworks anyway. We need to make something that Shiloh and his guys can consistently, year to year, enforce as rule of thumb, you know?
Two hundred and seventy-six complaints this year.
Does that mean, I mean, the easiest way to do that is say only the fourth.
And we've already, and we only had them for.
Or ban it at all.
Right.
Sitting there, we live too close. I've got a house next to me that's got a bad roof on it, and you get a firecracker or a cannon or something going out there, boom.
I mean, I'm not saying I want just the fourth, but that's the easiest to enforce, but I don't know how we keep it consistent, otherwise. The weekend before and the fourth, the weekend after?
That's the problem, if you, when you try and tie the weekends into it, is then if you try, so which, you know, so you, if it's if as it is this year, it's gonna be on Wednesday, so it's the middle of the week, you know, which means that it's tough to have it any other way, at least if you've got it only on the fourth, then it'd be covered, yes, Chuck?
I would say, just from coming from different communities that have uh done this in the past, I would make a recommendation that we do have a start time and a finish time. Although it is ideal to do the weekend before the weekend after, I think that's gonna create confusion on when, and it will, it will uh allow it'll end up in a lot more calls to as a nuisance.
You mean if we don't have it, including a weekend?
If we don't put a start date and a finish date, uh so whenever you're gonna start it, why don't we do just the fourth or first to the seventh, or whatever that is?
Why don't we do like the first to the seventh?
Cause that would include a lot of weekdays, I think.
Like, on some holidays, it would conclude a weekend, some it won't.
Some years, yeah.
First through seventh, it would always include part of a weekend.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, uh.
Chief. Which one? Yeah, true. Do you think that it's um having a couple of days allows people to to get it out of their system, rather than have it only as one day? Or are we gonna be the same problem, whether it's one day or six?
I think my personal opinion is limited to one day, the fourth of July is the fourth of July.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then we narrow it down to whatever time
Okay.
we agree upon.
Then that's fourth of July, seems good to me.
I think some of the confusion in Shiloh, we probably talked, is is that it wasn't only the days, it was the times, it was some days it was eleven, some days it was twenty. Yeah. I mean, they they didn't do us any favors on that one either, so I think.
And what about New Year's Eve then? Do we allow it or don't allow it?
No.
Cause at the moment, it's eleven.
I think if you're willing to go out and cold, so be it.
Yeah, I'd say you allow it on New Year's Eve.
So are you allowed on the on the thirty-first and the first?
I think fireworks is the fourth of July, that's my opinion, that's.
So there's other, there's other people to think about, though, I know, is it Christmas is a big?
We don't want to know Christmas.
Or no, New Year's, what, there's another.
There's other, there's other cultures.
My birthday?
There's other cultures at practice.
Chinese, New Year's or something.
What is the Iowa code again for for time on the fourth, up till eleven PM on the fourth of July?
Wow, no, get enough sleep.
And then it was twelve, thirty-one years.
I try to go to sleep at nine thirty-one, nine AM, pull me up by me, that's.
I mean, I I think that's the most easily enforceable, the day of and a timeframe that we decide on.
What time did your day start?
Four AM.
One?
What?
What time did your day start? If you say on the day of the fourth, it actually.
That's what I'm saying, and the timeframe.
You'd still have to follow Iowa code, which was what?
Till eleven, till ten AM. Ten AM, ten PM, whatever it is.
You can let them do it twelve to one AM on this.
So.
There's no restrictions on the use, you can you you can say whatever you want as long as it's used. So if you wanna say ten AM to eleven AM, if you wanna say ten AM to ten AM, say.
You only let spotlights.
So what we need today, though, we're not deciding on it today, we're discussing it.
Yeah, we're we're looking for directions.
Yeah, cause I didn't go back and redraft it now, again, then present it again, so I wanna know what you guys want this time, so we don't have to do this again.
Ten AM until midnight, July fourth.
Man, I love writing hard.
It's one day, it used to be two months, now it's one day.
So a- again, get getting back to enforcement, if we did corral it into an abbreviated period of about twelve to fourteen hours in in the course of a year, you know, of usage, um does that arise any problems or issues, or uh you know, I mean, I I think it was pretty heavy this year, I mean, I don't think there was a an hour gonna buy it in here, bop, you know, pop a crack or something.
There's still a few around.
Yeah, but uh.
Bobby, you.
I wasn't making, truly wasn't.
I I think the key is education.
Yes.
The last time, it was kind of rushed through, and there was no education. I think if we could focus on the one day or whatever's decided, we have from now until then to educate the citizens on what they can and can't do, and enforcement's gonna be a lot simpler, cause everyone will know what the rule is.
And now that we put it in the line in the sand, we have to.
Right, we have to be very.
Well, Chuck, we talked about that at the uh town hall meeting as well, about he'll have time then to educate, and and we can get, we can get, we can talk about that and and get it going ahead of time, so.
Cause I think once, we've talked about this in many aspects, once we start enforcing and writing tickets, that's when that stuff goes away. I used to not wear my seatbelt until I got a ticket for one twenty-seven fifty, which is the magic number that makes me wear my seatbelt every day.
Shiloh, can you sit, tell us, I know there wasn't figures specifically on fireworks complaints in the past because it was illegal. What would your, and and maybe you can't, but what was your estimation on, is it a lot higher number of complaints?
Based off of the years I've been here, it's a lot higher. But I don't have, I don't have specific numbers, but it was a lot higher.
Well, I would, I guess I'd be in support of very limited timeframe, I think, talking to people, we have a lot of people that didn't want it at all, but we have a lot of people that do, so.
It surprised me, it surprised me at the town hall meeting that, and we had a lot of older people there, and very, in fact, I think only one person at the town hall meeting said they were out now, didn't want them, which surprised me, I thought most people there would have said that they didn't want them at all.
She says there was two of them.
Was there two, okay, but it, but that's, but that's funny, isn't it? I would have thought that everybody there would have, you know, most of the people there would have said, nah, we don't want them.
Well, there was three over there that were saying they didn't want it, but they wanted to voice their opinions.
Okay, is that what it was? And that, and that's a trouble, I mean, cause you know, I'm sitting there thinking, wow, you know, we didn't, cause.
We walked around, stuck that microphone, that bothered us, scared them off.
And 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 just for.
I've never talked on it.
Just for the counterpoint on that, I I think, I think the people that are for fireworks, we heard, right? Like, they made, they made their their presence known every night, sometimes outside of the window, aloud, um.
Well, we definitely, we definitely had some bad experiences in town, I can tell.
Yeah, there is some excess use and just.
You know any towns that are doing a one week or? You know of any towns that are doing a one week or?
Only just one day.
I know that, I know they do that.
Spencer, that banned it altogether?
Most, I would say, I haven't thought always gonna ban it, but we guess. Yeah, so most communities banned it completely. Um, Des Moines did one day, uh, Fort Dodge did, I think the entire time. This is the problem, is every community did something different. Every community did have something different when it came to sales, when it came to, I mean, ninety percent of the time what happens is a uniform code comes out because there's time to prepare, but when it's thrown in your face in April and you have to rip it nice and long. Or by June one, when the fireworks started, you know, it's game, every community was scrambling. But I would say, well, like I said at the beginning, most communities said no to fireworks use for this year because they wanted to be held at that time.
I think like we talked at the city meeting, the way like he's talking, or Chuck's talking about educating, I think I suggest to put a flyer in with the city bill. If somebody says, everybody's gonna know it, well, not everybody's gonna know it, but then.
Well, I think, I think it's gonna take that in a lot more, I think it's.
Yeah, but that's the way you're gonna have to.
But if we've got, if we've got most of the year to get that done.
Right, and I think that's, that's the thing to work on.
And that makes, and that makes the police job that much easier, because then they, they can say, well, we did, you know, if they did the best they could.
And maybe a big sign out of Ace Cultures, you know, yeah.
You know, and another thing is, you know, we're, we're making this change or we're going on the path of this change, um, this will be after another legislative session. Who knows if they wanna recall.
Well, I mean, we could, we could dodge a bullet and have, have the state pull it all together.
But if you have it at the one day, I think you're ahead of the game.
Yeah, no, you know, I still think it's a good precedent set, just like, just dial it in in case it does continue, but.
My sources haven't said they're gonna bring it up yet.
I, I bet you got good sources.
So Zach, you're wanting them to say what they want.
I don't, I don't, I don't care if you guys wanna take another two weeks to think on it. I don't, we have time, I mean, we have to.
Well, and just, but as we were saying, and sooner we, the sooner we get something going, the sooner we can educate everybody.
Right, I mean, the next cycle of fireworks doesn't start again until December.
And at the mark, yeah, exactly. So we're not, so we haven't got as much time as you think, unless we ban, and we, and people have to know that that is banned because we've already told everybody it's okay.
I just, it's, I mean, I just wanna make sure that what we put, what we propose is what's, what's gonna stay, because we just, and it just.
And you, we look at the timing, considering that it's coming up in December, and it takes three meetings to, so we, and, um. December's gonna be a pretty quick.
Right, if you're comfortable with what you want, then, then lay it on and I'll put it together by the next.
So the consensus at the moment is for the, for the fourth, I don't know.
July fourth, I don't know.
Not, not.
From ten to eleven thirty or midnight? I say midnight.
Not New Year's?
I think one of the, I, I think one of the things, one of the difficulties, one of the difficulties is, most of the time the people that are wanting the, the display fireworks, you have to wait till nine thirty. I mean, you're gonna have people making a lot of noise all day long, for sure. But the people that are wanting to, to see the, the colors, it, you're gonna have to wait till nine thirty.
Yeah, good point.
So you're, you're limiting that to two and a half hours, which is, is a lot more than what we've got in ordinance now. I can see both sides, cause I certainly understand where you're coming from, but I also have people that have said they enjoy being able to do it, so.
Shiloh could probably talk more to this, but I, I feel like just from his personal experience, that it mainly fizzled out by the eleven o'clock hour anyway, because I don't know if people do that, they thought that was the rule or not, but it, I guess I didn't really notice it too much there before that.
Cause they're forty, fifty bucks a piece and they just blow them off in an hour.
So what times did you say?
Ten to midnight on the fourth. Okay.
And nothing on New Year's?
Well, we haven't talked about New Year's.
I, I guess I'm on the fence. I don't care either way about that. I think they're crazy to go out in the cold.
Yeah, I, I.
It's a big deal to serve people.
Yeah, there's, there's cultures and religions that celebrate that quite a lot.
To me, Australia, we don't let them off. Or maybe twelve thirty.
Well, yeah, you gotta wait, yeah, ten A M to twelve thirty on New Year's?
So now we have two different times, so I mean.
We have ten A M to midnight on December thirty-first.
If it's, if it's a New Year's thing, then if you're gonna have it on New Year's, then you'll just have it post of the evening, wouldn't you, close to the morning? But you still have your ten o'clock in the morning, I mean, I mean, unless you don't have it at all.
When you're saying evening, are you mean New Year's Eve evening or New Year's Day?
No, New Year's Eve.
Okay.
Yeah, the thirty-first, top first.
I think ten to midnight would be fine for New Year's Eve then.
Ten P, P M to midnight?
They're gonna go out in the cold.
That way it just keeps it consistent, minus a half hour.
Okay, let me see if I got, if I got this straight. Fourth of July, ten to midnight, is that what we said? New Year's Eve from ten A M until New Year's Day, twelve thirty, you know?
No, not at all, same time, same time, both days.
Well, you have to have, celebrating eleven, twelve.
I'm getting that busy.
Okay, now, remember, this is just all hypothetical, you don't, yeah, this is, you know, the job is now.
To me, the whole point of shooting off on New Year's is.
The ball drops, you shoot fireworks, or as it's talking, right?
Never shot fireworks off at night, um, never, thirty first.
It's illegal, it was illegal prior years.
Oh, yeah, I just wanna make sure I know this before, but if there's any more confusion, you can still shoot off fireworks if you get the special permit, if you're doing that, like a community, like, if the city of Webster City is gonna have, like you've had the last few years fireworks that the chamber maybe sponsored, they can still do it on any other day as long as you get the right permit from the city, so.
Well, six o'clock, see, now, you're talking about dark time, well, it'll be dark at six o'clock on. So then, so then you, if you did it at six o'clock, six till, till twelve thirty, then you'd be, you'd be all dark time, yeah.
Six to midnight.
I guess I was just sort of.
Well, but if you, but if you stop it at midnight, then you, it, it, if they wait till New Year's Eve to let them off, then they're all illegal, cause it, cause at twelve oh one, you can run around finding them.
Some of us like to race.
So these people, thirty really, cause otherwise, we're making everybody, the police are really busy at twelve oh one. Collecting a million phone calls, the phone will run off the hook, cause it's, everybody in town's letting them off.
Everybody forgot.
If you have to write a ticket at twelve oh two, mid, after, um, Ju- Jan- January one, is that gonna make your work work different because it's from one year to the next year?
It's a good thing to think about though, because, and then please weigh in on this, chief, cause I don't know, is, New Year's Eve is probably a very busy night for other issues, correct? You know, drinking, driving, and.
Which is, which is really probably why we're better off we didn't have it at all.
Very good.
And that's why I bring up, like, if it's gonna. Yeah, if it's gonna be a distraction to our police force, maybe we should just alleviate it.
You maybe add the problem all together and all that.
There's another question. Do you think New Year's Eve is busier than the fourth of July for the same exact issues?
I would think so.
Do you remember any fireworks reports on New Year's Eve in the past?
I know when you, there was.
You're shame on you.
It wasn't, I had the party, it wasn't me who let them off. It was people from down where I come from, it wasn't me.
I, I think, I think that, for, for consistency's sake, even though personally I would like to see it on New Year's and I personally I'd like to see it a wider window, but again, for the, for the sake of the community and then just for, um, uh, again, your guys' sake, the, the police department's sake, I think we should just not do it on, on New Year's Eve.
Well, we do encourage a lot more, um, cause everybody's already having a good time celebrating.
I'm okay with fourth of July.
At midnight, not so much at midnight on the fourth, by the time we got midnight, the fourth, they're already sleeping.
I think the thing to keep in mind is we're talking city limits too, they have the liberty, if they have friends out in the country, they can still do that for a wider window.
Sure everyone's got, sure everyone's got a farmer buddy or a, you know.
Okay, so fourth of July, ten to midnight?
Yes, okay.
Ten A M to midnight.
And nothing on?
Nothing on New Year's Eve at all.
Nothing in December or January?
I know we some minor tweaks to the ceiling, we'll, we'll discuss those at that point, thank you.
All right. Man, good to go.
Okay, D, reports and recommendations of officers, boards and commissions. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member in the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Um, we have one motion to accept city manager July reports, electric wastewater, water, electric year-to-date and water year-to-date, code enforcement. Two is a motion to accept the police department's July report, and three is a motion to accept the fire department's July, July report. How would you like to do one, two and three?
Can we have it approved collectively?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
I'm gonna go, Chuck.
Anyone else have anything they wanted to bring? No? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.